All right, I'm going to call the Mashpee Public Schools School Committee Regular Meeting of February 3rd, 2016 to order. It's 6:34, which means I'm running out of time for being late as usual. So with that, first item of business is the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance. To reply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item of business is public comment. We have Nicole Bartlett. Is that pronounced correctly? Thank you.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to comment tonight. My name is Nicole Bartlett. I'm a Mashpee resident and a parent of two children in the Mashpee schools. I wanted to speak tonight on the ongoing investigation into Superintendent's home visit. I know you've heard from folks with a long history in the community or people who've worked with Mr. Hyde, and I'm here to provide what I think might be a different perspective. I'm not a lifelong Mashpee resident or of the Cape. My husband, John, and I moved here seven years ago when I accepted a new job. I don't know the King family, and I've only known Mr. Hyde in his capacity as the superintendent of our school district. We chose to live in Mashpee because it was affordable, because it was small and safe, and the community really appealed to us. But I have come to question that decision in the last four months and in particular the last several weeks. I've definitely lost confidence in our school administration and you, our elected school committee. Because of Mr. Hyde's actions, our school district has been mentioned repeatedly in the press. I've read a redacted copy of an investigative report involving our school superintendent. I've had to read again and again how poor our district has historically performed. And while I've noticed a lot of positive things in our schools personally, and I'm told we're improving, I can't help but wonder if we were wrong to choose Mashpee as our home. I really appreciate your service to this community, and I know that you didn't send the superintendent on that home visit, but like it or not, you are the ones in the position to put this matter to rest. And all this noise and discontent and unrest in our community, it has to stop. I need to know that I'm giving my kids the best opportunity for an education that I can. And right now, there are parents, just like we were, moving to the Cape, trying to decide where to live, where to raise their family. And why would anyone witnessing the drama that has unfolded around this unfortunate incident choose this place, Mashpee? Why would a family like ours, who has a choice about where they can live, choose to stay? How can anyone have confidence in our current school administration or in your ability to provide support to the district? As a resident of this town and a parent in this school district, you are my representatives. You may not have walked through the door of the King home that day, but you will be held accountable for how you handled this incident thus far and how you handle it moving forward. So as I understand it, you're here to make decisions on our behalf, and you are in possession of the facts. The outcome of a criminal trial is not required for you to act. I ask that you please resolve this issue as soon as possible and move on to the business of giving our kids the very best education we can. They deserve it, and the community can really no longer afford this distraction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business is approval of the meeting minutes of January 20, 2016.
Who approves?
Motion by George. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. Any discussion? None? Have a vote, Scott?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris?
George?
Yes.
And yes. It's approved. Next item of business is an update from our student liaison, Dr. Cana III. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. All right. I'll say that. We've started term three successfully, completed term two, and all the midterms as well. I would first like to thank the administration and the staff for the different approach to the midterms this year. Last year, we had two exams a day and stayed in school, but some students opted out with parental approval. This year, there was a different approach as we had one exam a day during our long block, and then we could continue with our learning for the rest of the day. The bonus for students was that we weren't assigned any homework in order to do well on our exams, and it certainly paid off. This term, seniors who are enrolled in the School to Career Program were placed at their respective places of business. Some of the places include the Ktuwah Fire Department, the Briar Patch Pediatrics, Cape Cod Makers, I-Cape Solutions, the Cape Cod Times, Mashpee Police Department, the Steamship Authority, Integra Architecture, the Mashpee Public School Services, the Casey Coombs, and the Mashpee Public Schools IT Department. These students are all supervised under the leadership of Mr. Looney, the Department Chair of Career and Technical Pathways. We have a newly formed DECA chapter, which stands for Distributive Educational Clubs of America here at Mashpee. It prepares students for business-related competitions statewide and nationally, as well with other high schools. This group, under the leadership of Mr. Mannix, recently attended the District One Conference in Boston. Out of the 10 competitions that DECA was a part of, we had three top-10 finishers and one state conference qualifier. The competition consists of a written exam and two role plays in front of a panel of judges. This is a new club that offers a lot of opportunity for students to become familiar with the business world. Also, students are rehearsing for the spring production of The Wizard of Oz in March, on March 18th, 19th, and the 20th. National Honor Society is hosting another Cape Cod Healthcare Blood Drive on April 14th. The Mashpee Middle High School Student Council is collecting jeans for homeless teenagers. So drop your jeans off at Ms. Vaughn's room, B205, or the main office. And Kelly Bonnenberger's senior project is a dance marathon this Saturday at the Mashpee High School from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. We hope to see you boogie on down to MHS. We had many students win or place in the Cape Cod Life High School Student Art Contest. There will be a reception on Thursday, February 11th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Mashpee Commons Business Office, where all the students' artwork will be on display. Please stop by and see the wonderful works of art that come out of the art department. Also, this is an exciting time at the high school, as seniors are receiving college acceptance letters. And lastly, I would like to thank the school committee for your continuous support for all you do of making sure all students' needs are fulfilled and making sure all students can be successful. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask me.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
Can you show us how to boogie one more time?
I need a...
Appreciate it.
And now they'll have a new definition of marathon. It's three hours, right?
That's right.
All right. Thank you, Frederick. We have an update on the Mashpee Middle School from Principal Mark Bellistraci.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you some of the great things that are taking place at Mashpee Middle High School. The best person to give this presentation tonight, I feel, is our headmaster, Ms. Rhea Melby for grades 7, 8, 9. She's done a phenomenal job of helping to improve that middle school this year, and has really brought a lot of new life and new activities and new opportunities for our students as she's come into that post. So I'd like to welcome for your update Ms. Rhea Melby, and she's accompanied by 8th grader CJ Cliff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and School Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to let us talk about all the exciting and fun things that we have going on at the middle school. First of all, I would like to address the DC Travelers. We have currently, we just kicked off the DC Travelers' raffle tickets, as many of you may have seen in Stop and Shop, Roach Brothers, the movie theaters, everywhere. You have a table of 8th graders begging, pleading for you to spend $2 on a raffle ticket. And I would just like to take this moment to thank our parents, our community, our staff for supporting the raffle tickets. This is a huge opportunity for kids to go and experience our nation's capital. And I just would like to share one example. I saw a junior student a few days ago approaching an 8th grade student who was begging them to buy a ticket. And they bought $20 worth of raffle tickets because they had gone on the trip a few years ago. They recognized the value of the trip. What 11th grader has $20 to just give to an 8th grader? So that was really nice to see. And as a result of our community's support, we are currently about $900 over what we anticipated last year. So our first round of raffle tickets are right about $3,000. So as we anticipate offering scholarships to families to increase the number of students who can go, this is such a great way that the community, the parents, and the staff and our students buy into this and support our kids. For student government, we have a meeting coming up next week. We have a semi-formal dance coming up on March 4th, and it is a Hollywood Oscars. On the red carpet, under the lights, is all about Hollywood and all of that. So we're excited, and we're looking forward to it. Last year, we had a great turnout, so we're looking forward to the same. As far as athletics go, we've had a wonderful, fantastic winter season, so many great accomplishments. Our sports teams overall have just been phenomenal. But I would like to highlight a few individual accomplishments. I feel like sometimes the 7th and 8th graders get overshadowed by the high school students, so I just would like to take this opportunity to mention a few students. 8th grader Taz Hashi took second place in this two-mile race at the South Shore League Meet at the Reggie Lewis Center on January 27th. She finished two miles with a time of 13 minutes and 39 seconds. I'm happy if I finish one mile in 13 minutes and 39 seconds, and she did two miles, so great job by Taz. 8th grader Jordan Hugh broke the Mashpee basketball record on January 23rd for most points scored in a quarter. She scored 18 of her 27 game points during the fourth quarter. Very talented athlete. The middle school boys' basketball team has won six out of the seven games. They played one game today at Balmouth. It was very close at the end. I don't know what the outcome was, but at the half, it was tight. Many of our players at this age are hitting three-pointers, and I would just like to mention two in particular. Logan Westcott and Liam Burton. Each one hit three-pointers in a basketball game, so that was really fantastic for this crew. We also have a program coming up on March 15th, 2016. Now, we're always trying to pursue, you know, college and career readiness, and too often, I think, is pushed back on the high school. We really can start exploring our options at their earlier ages. So thanks to the Guidance Department, Lindsay Cad, working with, in conjunction with Mike Looney, and our senior Brittany Martini, they have brought dollars for degrees, saving and paying for college. And so they are hosting Cape Cod Five for a pre-educational workshop for pre-K through 8th grade parents that explores valuable techniques and strategies to save, plan, and pay for higher ed. So we do request that you sign up again this Tuesday, March 15th, here at the Quasnet Library, from 6:00 to 7:00. It's a wonderful opportunity. You're never too young to start thinking about your child's future and where they're going to go to college. Next. Next, I've saved the best for last. I would just like to take a moment to talk about this fantastic program in our state. It's called Project 351. And Project 351 is a service initiative. It was started by the Massachusetts Governors Council in 2011. It celebrates service, leadership, and the values of kindness, compassion, humility, and the generosity of spirit. Ambassadors are expected to use the service and leadership skills they develop to address important issues facing their local communities. They are expected to demonstrate all of these while engaging their communities in service. So throughout this year and last year, this is CJ Cliff. I have observed him in a variety of environments, including classrooms, student government activities, and others. Everything I have observed is indicative of the qualities that Project 351 values. CJ is outgoing, kind, compassionate, and thoughtful. And these are the traits that truly make him a leader, not just within Mashpee, but with the school community and then in his future as well. So he was the perfect representative for Project 351. And we also have a Project 351 alumni with Frederick Hannah over there. So at this time, I would just like to turn it over to CJ to talk to you about what Project 351 is and how it inspires people to find your passion and to think about what it is that connects you with life, what drives you, what is going to make you really make a contribution to your community. So here's CJ.
First off, I'd like to thank Ms. Melby for inviting me to speak about this wonderful opportunity that I had last month. So first off, Project 51 is a community service project to help get Massachusetts united and helping our capital grow. It also brings a connection of students from the Cape to the western state borders and allows them to grow and know more about what might not happen at their school but in another school. So during that day, along with getting to meet kids from all over the state, I had gone to work with AIBA, which stands for Inquilos Baracos in Action. And they were founded about 30 years ago, and they help people around their community in South Boston through acts such as helping the homeless, decorating elders' homes along with the community. What we had done that day was we had filled mason jars with hot chocolate milk mix for the elders, along with painting murals with patron saints as Black civil rights leaders to show their impact. One of these people were Martin Luther King, and we had the shadow of him against the mosaic background with one of his quotes. The shadow of him represents how he wasn't done preaching and how his shadow and his impact will affect the people in the past, present, and whoever slept to come.
Thank you.
Okay. And what do you hope to do with the project?
So with this project, we also do another one in the spring. So we're planning to do either some type of food drive or a soup kitchen for the people around here in Dayton sometime in the spring.
So it's a really nice way to take community service, look at it on a state level, and then say, okay, how can we bring it home? How can we help Mashpee? And how can we really, you know, make a difference here? So hats off to CJ for his hard work with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to be held accountable for you. Next item of business is in regard to the investigation into the superintendent's home visit of September 29, 2015. We wanted to give an update. The committee met on January 28th in executive session to review various information that we had received to date and has scheduled, or will be scheduling, a meeting on February 12th, so a week from this Friday, for an executive session to have further discussion and ultimately hopefully make a decision in regard to the status of Superintendent Brian Next item of business is Data Quest invoice. I've handed out to everyone a copy of the detail behind the invoices that I had received This represents each of the meetings, the various travel times that you will see commuting on and off the Cape, since we requested that the investigator not be from the Cape. And then you'll see administrative time that was spent summarizing the interviews and then also preparing both the draft report that was presented to the committee and then ultimately the final report that was submitted to the committee. The original invoice for the work that was completed that they submitted was for $3,439.60. After reviewing that and going back and discussing it with them, in particular, the mileage charges that were in the original bill were adjusted downward to the current IRS acceptable limits, which is standard practice for mileage charges. And as a result, the invoice is now $3,317.20. Any questions in regard to any of the detailed items? I don't know if I have copies. Here's a copy of the invoice that I just referenced. I don't have copies. I thought I had made them, and apparently I don't for each of those. That's just summarizing the detail that was provided to you. And I have verified that everything in the invoice is in the detailed schedule and that the totals are mathematically correct. My value add. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Who can't hear me? I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Is this better? Okay. Hearing no questions from the committee, I need a vote or would like a vote from the committee in regard to accepting the invoice and authorizing Paul Funk, the business manager, to pay this invoice for the independent investigation into the events surrounding September 29, 2015 regarding Superintendent Brian Hyde.
I didn't seem to even have to have a motion, and I was wondering if anybody would be interested in actually tabling this until after February 12th.
I am open to that suggestion also.
Yeah, I would like to discuss this.
Can you repeat that?
I'm sorry. I would ask the committee if there was be any discussion, if we could table this until after the executive session on February 12th, as I have some things I'd like to discuss.
Sure. Can we discuss them right here?
No, we cannot.
All right. So I have a motion on the table to...
I don't know how much I can say. I'd like to discuss alternative payment methods.
Okay. Fair enough.
So can I maybe table this until the next meeting after the executive session on February 12th?
So the next meeting is March 3rd.
I didn't have a second. Second?
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. So we have a motion to table this to the next meeting, which would be March 3rd. And we have a second for that? Any other discussion?
Will we not incur a late fee? I believe we will.
I was just looking at that.
$5 if it's 30 days or something like that.
See here, 30 days are subject to a late payment of 5% of the balance or $25, whichever is greater. So 25% of $3,000 is roughly about $150. The committee would be...
What's the date for 30 days?
30 days from the date of the invoice. Invoice date is the 11th of January.
Well, the new invoice, I thought it said the 26th. Is that, are that the due date? So it's 30 days past the due date?
30 days past the due date.
Which is, it's not going to be past the due date, but we're not going to be 30, yeah, we wouldn't be 30 days past the due date.
Yeah. So committee needs to be aware of that, that there will be an additional cost. That additional cost is basically almost the same as the reduction that I got in mileage charge, so.
Good job.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, we've had the document, I mean, we've had the invoice for almost a month now, or at least 25 days, so that's, you know, I think that any discussion could have been had in the last three weeks, but that's all I have.
Okay. Any other discussion? Take a real call vote. Scott?
This is for tabling?
Yes, this is the motion to table until March 3rd.
No.
Yes.
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 No. Three to two, motion carries. This will be tabled to the March 3 meeting. Okay, thank you. Next item of business is a report from the superintendent.
So good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening, Chairman Myers and School Committee. I have a short statement I would like to read before doing my report, if that's okay.
All right.
I want to address a recent quote in the Cape Cod Times, which stated that "The school system has been in a state of dysfunction ever since the incident. To be clear, over the past three months, there has been no dysfunction at the classroom level, at the school level, or at the district office level. First, I thank the members of the school committee for their support during these past three months, as my role shifted to that of acting superintendent. I have been a member of this school district for 21 years and take this responsibility very seriously. Second, I want to thank and recognize our district leadership team: Mashpee Middle High School Principal Mark Bellistraci, Quasnet School Principal Mary Kate O'Brien, Coombs School Principal Wendy Lithwin, Special Education Director Michelle Brady, and Business Manager Paul Funk. These leaders consistently go above and beyond to ensure that our students and our teachers have what they need and that quality learning opportunities are provided to every student. Our building principals, together with other building leaders, work closely with their staffs to maintain positive and safe learning environments. Third, I thank and recognize our Mashpee Public School teachers. I visit classrooms on a daily basis and witness their efforts to provide each student with the very... the very best learning experiences. Research has shown that the teacher in the classroom has the most significant impact or influence on student growth and achievement. Our district moving from a Level 3 to a Level 2 status is the direct result of the daily work of our teachers and the efforts of our students. Fourth, I thank and recognize all of our support personnel for their daily focus on fulfilling the responsibilities of their positions. These individuals consistently go above and beyond to make our schools the best. I specifically thank Gail Hannan, Ellen DiMello, Kathy Lico, Darlene Phelan, and Jody Gallagher for the outstanding work over these past three months. Finally, I thank our students and their families. Our students only get one chance to grow up. The staff at the Mashpee Public Schools plays an important part in this process, and we take this role very seriously. Every moment of each day matters. We continually strive to build and maintain strong partnerships with our families. Speaking for myself and our staff, our students always come first. Given the events of recent weeks, I also want to acknowledge our bus drivers for their flexibility and support. They are valuable members of our team. Regardless of what is written in newspapers, is posted on social media, is written in letters, or is reported on the radio or television, our entire staff remains focused on providing our students with the very best possible learning experiences. We are an intelligent, highly skilled, collaborative, dedicated, and unified team striving to reach our goal of becoming a high-performing school district. We have the most amazing, intelligent, talented, and kind students for whom we are very grateful. Our work is all about our students, and for me, they will always come first.
If I may say something before. I'd like to just add something here. When I received the email, I'm sorry, the, read the newspaper account, quotes attributed to the town manager, I sent him an email, I copied Ms. McCormick on it, I copied Kathy Lico, actually mentioned it, I copied the school committee, and basically said that, I, you know, read the article, I would take issue with one, and that was that this was dysfunction in the school district. And I trusted that that was a misquote. And, and I went through briefly what you were talking about right here. I received an email back from the town manager, and he mentioned, as I'm sure Ms. McCormick will verify, that he was not misquoted, that that's exactly what he said. However, when he said it, he meant the school committee and not the school district. I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have administrative reports from Mrs. Lithwin at the Coombe School. Congratulations to art teacher Kim Palmer, and to students Greenlee Davis in kindergarten, Caitlin Nash, Grade 1, and Willow Rejoy, Grade 2, whose work was presented at the Cape Cod Museum of Art in Dennis. Thank you also to Kim Palmer for organizing the Katuut Center for the Arts Field Trips. I think those were this week. Thank you to Katie Martin, she is the STEM teacher, for organizing crewmates and classmates, and also her Thornton Burgess visits. Meg Smith, the librarian at the Coombe School, is giving a thank you for hosting the kindergarten pajama night. And thank yous to Suzie Brooks and Colleen Terrell and Meg Smith for their support in presenting a technology night for, for our parents. Upcoming events is a, let's see, a school council meeting on the 9th. Right, Mrs. Lithwin?
Yes.
Math night is February 11th at the Coombe School. Is there anything, oh, and the other acknowledgement she included was the fabulous Mashpee Middle School 7th graders who have been coming to the Coombe School to complete service projects through the GRADE program, which is very much appreciated.
One other addition that's just finally been finalized, we will be having a Zumba-thon on February 26th. This is a PTO fundraiser, and our families are invited, February 26th, to our Zumba-thon under the black lights. It should be a lot of fun.
How long is the Zumba-thon? So I'm comparing that to a dance-a-thon.
The Zumba-thon's going to be from 6 to 8.
6 to 8, two hours for a Zumba-thon, okay. Thank you. What, what day is that?
That's a Friday, February 26th.
February 26th, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Principal Lithwin. And for the next report, Quashnet School Principal Mary-Kate O'Brien is here. She would like to acknowledge Mrs. Hill and Ms. Sherman for the outstanding concert of our 4th through 6th grade band and string ensembles. She would also likewise like to thank and recognize Mrs. Terrell and Mrs. Brooks, and three 8th grade students, wonderful middle school students, Tess Hatchey, Mary Hatchey, and Krista Dolan, for their support at the parent technology night. Quashnet School is the recipient of 40 new ukuleles that were donated by Sharon Rodart, did I say that right? A parent of a former student, she won the ukuleles and listed Quashnet as her school of choice to receive them. And Mrs. O'Brien would like to thank her on behalf of the students and music teachers who will put the instruments to good use. DJ Uch, how you say the last name?
Uch.
Uch, okay. DJ Uch was a big hit with students in delivering an Assembly on Kindness, and this was sponsored by the very fabulous Quashnet School PTO. Thank you to 6th grade teacher Elizabeth Babbage, who is also the National Elementary Honor Society Advisor for her work in preparing a wonderful Quashnet School Elementary Honor Society induction ceremony, and to all of the student scholars inducted for their hard work and dedication. I'm going to read the names, because I think it's important. Autumn Bailey, Sadie Beal, Jocelyn Cohen, Maya Branson, Gillian Burge, William Chapman, Colton Colleran, Jacob D. Francesco, Ava Desimone, Ryan Flaherty, Braden Frazier, Emerson Frazier, William Henley, Ava Kelly, Anika Lakatos, Maria McDonald, Katrina Mayan, Catherine O'Neil, Robert O'Neil, Daisy O'Reilly, Stella Stasey, Maria Strom, Lily Swift, Mateo Vasquez, Sean Ware, and Kalen Westgate. Congratulations to these new inductees. Upcoming on Mrs. O'Brien's list of events for February is the Water Festival on the 11th. That is a wonderful opportunity for our 5th graders to learn. And STEM Night at the Quashnet School is the 25th of February. Mrs. O'Brien, would you like to add anything?
We do have the GRADE program beginning on the 23rd of February for our 5th grade students. And Mr. Myers, we expect you at the STEM Night the night before Zumba.
I'm glad you're chair.
I think I need a new calendar.
Next up, we have the Mashpee Middle High School report, with Principal Balistraci is here. He would like to recognize Mr. Troyanos and Ms. Keller, and all of our student musicians for their great performances at the Winter All Band and All Choral events. They were wonderful. Thank you to MMHS staff and to the Mashpee students and families for making the Program of Studies Open House a great event. It was a great experience to share the unique and innovative programs with students, families, and members of the community. There are some High Five Award winners, and I would like to read those names as well. Grade 7 Maggie Conley, Evan McLaughlin, Sean Smith, Ben Johnson, Gavin Emerson. Grade 8 Phoebe Cohen, Cashette Baumfleck, Cole Lorig, Maddie Souza, Cole Lorig, and Adriana Desimone. Grade 9 Taj Bone, Tiana Peters-Williams, Sarah McNamara, Michael Giquillo, Sarah McNamara again, and Ben Hudson. Grade 10 Josh McEnroe, Danielle Shay, Michael Frazier, Josh McEnroe also, again, Miranda Goveya, and Michael Frazier. So we had two, two furs in grade 10. Grade 11 Josh and Chopra, Jordan Schmelzer, Alexander Franklin, Cassidy O'Hara, Thomas McPhee, and Alexander Franklin. He had ELA and Foreign Language. And then grade 12 Caleb Holt, Shannon McGovern, Allison O'Keefe, Julian Terry, Jason DeMers, and Lindsay Barrows. So congratulations to these students for being recognized for that effort. Would you like to add anything?
That's perfect, thank you very much.
Okay. We have the report from Special Ed Director Michelle Brady, who is also here this evening. You can see there that we currently have 337 students who are receiving specialized services. And then there's a list of the events that Mrs. Brady has attended and her strong community connections. Would you like to add anything?
Just that we're having our next CPAC meeting for parents and anyone that's interested on basic rights, the procedural safeguards for parents. We finish up Thursday, what, 10, 6:30, and the Mashpee Public School main office.
Thank you. We also have in the packet the report from Athletic Director Matt Traveri. And just to read some of his notes, freshman Mashpee goalie Jack Daniel recorded two straight shutouts, made 65 straight saves. The Falmouth Mashpee Gymnastics set a points record in a loss to Barnstable, but they scored 143.75, and Barnstable is the state champion. 8th grade girls varsity basketball player Jordan Hugh, which you heard Ms. Melby speak of tonight, she set a record by scoring 18 points in a quarter.
Wow.
The previous record for points in a quarter was held by Billy Bellidy and Dennis Gorsica at 16 points. Hugh is the leading girls scorer in the South Shore League Small Schools.
Absolutely.
And I forgot to mention that next, I think it's next Tuesday, the 9th is Indian Ed Parent Committee meeting at 6:30 at Mashpee Middle High School. Anyone have any questions on the administrative reports? Okay, Personnel Report, Brenna Forsberg has been hired as a 6th grade teacher. She was a long-term sub for a person out on maternity who is not coming back this year, so she is more official at this point. And we received notice of a retirement. It's not until the end of the school year for James Cracia, a science teacher at the high school. That's an end-of-the-year retirement. The enrollment sheet shows that we have 446 students at the Coombe School, 508 students at the Quashnet School, 277 students at the Mashpee Middle School, and 434 students at the Mashpee High School, a total of 1665. Which is an increase of 1.
All right. Any questions? Thank you.
And the last part of my report, included in your packet, is some data related to the recently released educator performance evaluation ratings from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And what you have in your packet shows data at the state level, and then our district level, and then for each school. And just a caution in terms of how people interpret this information, it's not meant to be comparative between districts. There's a lot of collaboration going on, not only within districts, inter-district, but intra-district. And some districts have made the decision that no teacher or administrator would earn an exemplary rating, and it was negotiated with their unions. Mashpee is not in that position. However, to earn an exemplary overall rating, a teacher not only has to demonstrate a certain level of expertise within his or her classroom, but also be able and willing and demonstrate that they model it for their peers. So there's just information in there for you to digest. At the end of this year, in addition to a summative rating, which is what you see here, teachers will also receive a, an impact rating in terms of their impact on student learning. And there has to be two years' worth of student growth data in order to make that determination. And that piece of information only determines the type of plan that a teacher, these two pieces of information together, their summative rating and their impact on student learning are combined to determine the type of plan they end up on.
So what sort of takeaway should the committee be arriving at in looking at this data then?
Well, initially in June, or maybe it was July, we had some preliminary data on this. And I know that we went back to look at all of our records, which are kept in an online program called Teach Point. You should see 100% in every category being evaluated. So you'll notice that Coombe School, good job, has 100% in all their categories. Quashnet School does not show 100%, but having been there, I would, I'm surprised at this because we did evaluate everyone. But in looking at some of the backup for the information, there were a couple people who were included in what was fed up to the state. One was a long-term sub, and one was out on leave, so I'm not even sure why they would have been included. So sometimes not the best data always gets put up there. We had a chance to fix some things, which I thought we did, but those ones weren't ones we looked at. So you do want to see 100% in the evaluation, and you want to see a shift over time, if you were looking at this data from year to year, where you see a gradual shift in the columns. So the needs improvement are expected to, to eventually be proficient. Unsatisfactory would shift over, or else they end up shifting out.
So the overall results, just looking within our schools, any surprises?
Probably the biggest surprise for me, and I'm not sure, and it was my school last year, is there seems to be a high percentage who scored exemplary. And that means their overall rating would have to be exemplary. I know that in each of the rating categories, people might have received some exemplaries, and then it was basically a judgment, if you had more exemplaries than proficient, you ended up exemplary. I would have been responsible for half of the evaluation, certain grade levels, and the assistant principal at the time, the other half. So personally, for me, I'd be, why does Quashnet have so many exemplary? Not that I didn't hire well, I will say. I did.
I knew that was coming.
And, you know, we weren't frivolous in giving out whatever evaluations. That does seem high to me, though, so I would wonder about that.
Mr. Chairman, to the chair.
Yes.
Is there any way to determine how many of the teachers non-professional status, which is, I believe, which is the category of individuals who are three years or less? How many of those, can we figure out how many of those are in the needs improvement column? And is, are we making, is that a majority of our needs improvement, or is it persons that already have professional status? Do you know that answer?
We have the actual summative rating for every teacher. It's, you could not, it is not just non-professional status teachers who end up in needs improvement. If a teacher with professional status ends up with needs improvement, they are put on a plan specifically targeting the areas of deficit and monitored. But we do have that information, but that would not be publicly released.
And I guess the same would go for unsatisfactory?
Absolutely. Unsatisfactory, if you're non-professional and you're unsatisfactory, you probably are not asked back.
Thank you.
You'd have to be pretty bad to be there.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Next item of business, new business, Mass School Building Authority, approval of an application for a statement of interest.
This, the, the town, the, the state has put out a deadline of February 12th for districts to put in a statement of interest for certain types of projects. The window project at the Quashnet School would qualify for consideration within this accelerated program. So this memo, which is coming from Catherine Laurent, the DPW director, is requesting the school committee to approve, which they must do in a, you must read this next part out loud.
Okay.
They would have to sign off on indicating their support, the selectmen have to sign off as well, for the statement of interest to be submitted specific to, it's specific to the window project here at the Quashnet School, and at this point, there's no funding commitment required by the town. So in the page 18 of the packet, or you probably have the original?
No, I don't, I just have a copy.
Okay, well, oh.
Okay.
You have to read that out loud.
Okay. Any, any questions before I read the resolution that we would need to vote on in regard to what we're trying to accomplish here?
Just to clarify, I mean, it looks like it's, they're looking to seek a grant, and they need approval by the school committee and selectmen to start the process of seeking that grant out.
That, yeah. If we don't ask, we don't have any shot of getting it.
Gotcha.
Any other questions before I go through the resolution? Any other questions before I go through the resolution? Hearing them. We resolve, having convened an open meeting on February third, two thousand and sixteen, the school committee of the town of Mashpee, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Boarding Authority the statement of interest form dated February twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, for the Quaschent School located at one fifty Old Barnstable Road, Mashpee, Massachusetts, zero two six four nine, which describes and explains the filing deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Boarding Authority in the future. Priority five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility as determined in the judgment of the authority. The project is replacement of windows throughout the school. The windows are original to the building's construction in nineteen seventy-eight. There are significant air leaky throughout the windows. The steel frames are eroded and rusted, and the seals have failed trapping moisture between the glass panes. The resulting heat losses resulted in higher energy costs to sustain a minimum level of comfort for students and staff. And hereby specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Boarding Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Boarding Authority, or commits the city, town, or original school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Boarding Authority. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution as read?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing them, Scott?
Aye. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is there an original that I have to sign? Or just this? That's it?
No, you don't.
All right, well, it's official. Thank you. All right. Next item of business is in regard to preschool start times for two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year. And we are looking for a vote on that. I believe this came up at the last meeting.
I move to accept the preschool start times as presented.
Second.
Do I have a discussion? Can you please, for at least the audiences, addification, indicate what the new start times would be?
So the new start time for the full-day program of preschoolers at the Casey Coombs School will go from nine AM and end the day at two fifty the same time. So it's a nine AM start is what you would be voting for. That's the change from current.
Effective next school year.
Effective in the sixteen, seventeen school year.
Correct. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing them, Scott?
Aye. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'm assuming that is, thank you. Next item of business is subcommittee reports. K through eight universal summer program. Ms. Boer is going to give you an update.
Currently, we have a parent survey out to all of our K to eight families, seeking their input on, into the planning process for a universal summer school program. Currently, our summer school program is an extended school year program for students who have special needs and have been shown to meet certain criteria. Pretty much the priority one is that they have shown a regression in skills when there is a gap during learning time. This program would be open to all students, whether they are special ed or not, and it would be for students who, at the end of the school year, meet certain criteria, basically that they are not at the place that they should be, so that we would be better able to prepare them for the start of the following year and sort of give them a, which may be something down the road. So we're going to continue to collect the data, probably have a couple of focus groups, meet with the school councils, and decide a monetary budget that would go with the program that seems to be most of interest to parents. Most parents indicate they would not need transportation, and if they do sign up, they would plan on being, participating a hundred percent.
Wow. All right.
It's exciting.
Sounds like it's after a good beginning as far as getting feedback from everyone, and I would again encourage people, take a few minutes, fill it out, provide your feedback.
Mrs. Brady, would you like to add anything to?
No, I'm just wondering, so far, is there a preferred, you know?
In terms, we offered about six different options for laying out the summer program, and it's really coming out pretty even. It's not going to be that helpful, so we'll see where that goes. Then we will have to make sure we really explore the staffing side of this plan.
Yeah, I think that'll be the big, big potential challenge.
And the possible heat element.
Okay, thank you for that update. Any questions? More to come on this in the future. Next item of business is policy subcommittee. We have a second reading, policy JF, school admission. And you have that in your packet.
Not really much to say. It's, it was changed the way we discussed it during the last meeting. Me personally, I'm still comfortable with the way it's written.
All right. And the change here is really defining the terms regarding residency in Mashpee. Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little concerned about overstating what we're intent is. We, I think the idea is to have Mashpee residents, but, you know, this italicized edition talks about, the wording is residency is defined as actually residing with a Mashpee resident. Who is the legal parent guardian, legal parent and guardian during the days and evenings of the days that school is in session? I mean, I think that the appropriate term might be Mashpee dwelling, with a Mashpee resident. I mean, you know, we could insert words in here thirty-five different ways, but I don't want to leave any gaps here where someone could say, I'm a Mashpee resident, however, currently, I'm not living in Mashpee, however, this student must attend your school. You know, I think, I would prefer that we kept the admission policy, as it were. We didn't seem to have any problems with it, and it seems to be, no one seems to dispute that policy JF. It seems to be universal in every school in the Commonwealth.
Any other comments?
I don't know how to respond to that, since this is the third time we've talked about it, and every time, there's something new to discuss. But the first line of policy JF says, a school, a child of school age who reside in the town. And all the attempt was to do was to clarify what reside in the town means, so there's no confusion. If, again, I will defer to the Democratic if the committee says that, determines that that definition is not required, and I'm trying to leave me future issue, you know.
I mean, I respect the initiative, but I just feel we're over clarifying. You know, I mean, we could add a blurb to every policy, not every policy in our manual. But, you know, I'm more than welcome to have the vote.
Other, other comments, any discussion?
I move to approve as second read. I'm sorry, to accept as second read.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes. Has this, now, some people might be upset with me for saying this, but have you run this by council, Mr. Chairman?
I believe this was run by council originally, yes.
What was this? I mean, you know, in the last, this was last presented in January, isn't that correct? The reason I bring it up is because as, when I was chair, I did not submit this because I did not have the time to do so. I was removed from the position, and so I didn't send it. So I want to know if it has been looked at, by council since then. That's my question.
It has not been looked at council since the last meeting, no.
Well, what I'm getting at is, I think it's, you know, we have, we have new wording since that last meeting, is that correct? The last meeting, we created new wording. Maybe I've been correct on that.
I have no issue, I mean, just being, I just moved to accept it as the second reading. I have no issue with it being put forth to council, because we know that putting things in front of council makes things move so much faster.
So Scott, are you making a motion to table the vote until it is being submitted by council?
I just would, you know, what I'm saying is, if it's going to be a final approval, I would probably object, but I would suggest that, to protect all interests, that the committee run it by council, and actually, you know, we'll see him in person in next Friday, so.
Again, I just moved to accept, so if, between now and the next time that we move to approve the third read, I have no issue with it going to council. As a matter of fact, I'd be happy to send it.
We are not voting on it tonight, we're not voting on the policy, we're just voting as a second read.
Yeah, all right.
So you seconded.
Yeah. Any other comments then? All right, so the motion on the table is to approve the second read.
To accept as second read.
To accept as second read. The school mission policy amendment as presented. Scott?
So that's not final approval, right?
It's not final?
No.
All right. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we will submit this to the, to council for his review, and bring that back to the committee at the March third meeting. Next item is second read for policy IF, regard multi-tiered system of support framework for improving the educational performance of all students.
I move to accept a second read.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing them, how do you vote? Scott?
Aye. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Second read is approved, so come back for final approval.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, we said, I think, the third of March, and actually, the next meeting is the second of March, it's a Wednesday night.
Okay.
Just for correction for the record.
Thank you. All references to the third, good change to the second. Thank you. As a administrative oversight.
I have a couple of other subcommittee.
Yeah, I was going to say, yes, other subcommittee reports?
Aye, yes, Mr. Chairman. The wellness subcommittee met today. We have a revised athletic concussion policy. It has to, it was approved by the wellness committee, also as a policy, so I don't know how you want to work this, have a special policy meeting for it, or if you would like to read it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we'll set up a special, not a special, we'll set up a policy committee meeting to go over it. It's mainly words, changing to bring it up to date, clarification, and bringing it up to the latest state regulations is what these changes are all about. We've also had some action, if you will, in the recovery area. Principal Bava Strachi, along with three of his staff and I, went up to Rockland on this past week, Monday, thank you, and to get trained in the exhibit called Hidden in Plain Sight. This is an exhibit that will be coming to Mashpee the twenty, the, it will be available from the twenty-fourth of April until the second of May. That doesn't mean it's going to be shown, but that's just when the equipment will be available. For those of you who are not familiar with it, it's a teenage bedroom, set up as you might find any teenage bedroom, except it looked a lot neater. And in there, there's some seventy items which could be identification markers that your child might be drinking or using substances. There's also a little bit of educational seminar after that, that will be happening at the week of April twenty-fourth. We also are going to have, the Recovery High School is coming to visit, Recovery High School, there are four of them in the state. The students there are in recovery, that's one of the requirements, they have to be clean and sober while there, and they are coming down here to make a presentation to our seventh and eighth, thank you, seventh and eighth grades sometime in the timeframe, late March to early April. We also have a current organization, which Principal O'Brien is working on. This is an education program for the sixth grade as far as drug addiction, I'll take that back, as far as addiction is concerned. And they are working on getting that incorporated into the program. And I don't know if I'm the finance committee, but we're going tomorrow evening to the finance committee, Mr. Funk, Mr. Boer, and myself, to present the school budget for questions and approval, hopefully by the finance committee. And what's, oh, that's the, the article we just talked about.
Okay.
Acting Superintendent Boer spoke about. So, I'm done.
All right. Any other subcommittees? No, not at this point? Okay. Events and happenings?
I think we hit most of them. Is there anything that we missed, principals?
No.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda in regard to the liaison assignments.
Move. I'm not sure if I want to. You'll be a little more specific.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss changing the liaison assignments.
All of them?
No, I have one in particular.
Okay.
That I would like to talk about. If I have a second. Do I, can I have a vote to add this to the agenda?
Aye. Yes.
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 Yes. I'd like to change the liaison assignment for the Indian education. I've received a request that we make a change due to potential conflicts, and currently, so I'm looking to... so I'm looking to reassign that to someone, currently Scott McGee is the school committee representative for that committee. Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss it. It appears that the Director of the Indian Education Program doesn't want me as a member of that committee, the liaison to that committee. I made some sarcastic remarks to her, to the Director last meeting, about wanting to help her gather signatures, and she felt that was a threatening, she felt that was threatening in some way. I don't understand why Ms. Riley doesn't understand sarcasm. If she doesn't want me there, that's her decision, but that doesn't mean I have disagreements with people, and there wasn't even a disagreement, it was snark, sarcasm, and I think we're all adults here, and Mr. Santos was standing right there and saw the sarcasm. There was no threatening actions, there were no threatening words. There were two reporters that are sitting here in this room that saw it. There was nothing threatening about it, and they even mentioned in the article that it was sarcasm. So if this committee wants to throw me out, go ahead and throw me out, have your vote. Someone else can go.
Any other comments?
Is this a request by the committee, is it a request by the individual, is it a request by what?
It's a request by Carla Riley, who wants to assert authority over this committee. That's what it is.
Has there been feedback from any other members of the Trump Education?
No, there hasn't.
How many members are on the board, please? That board?
There are four officers. The last meeting that we had, there were probably 10 people in attendance, maybe 11.
And Patty can attest that, you know, I don't, you know, I act in a professional manner, wherever I go, I gain some snark to a lady, and if she doesn't like it, then you have to understand that people are sometimes sarcastic. I was not in a good mood that night. I'm really not in a good mood tonight, but I'm still able to handle myself in a professional manner. Have your vote.
What I will say about this, I did hear those comments, and, you know, I'm not going to speculate whether it was sarcasm, it could have been, but I'm not going to read anybody's mind and tell you whether or not it was sarcasm, but.
Well, it was an offer of help, if it wasn't sarcasm, it was an offer for help. I said, "I would like to help you get your signatures." You can't twist the words that came out of my mouth, I didn't, that's not a threatening sentence. If we want to have a comedy of errors here, we can continue to have comedy errors, we can just continue to do our work.
Do we have a, this is a committee that we only have one representative on, correct?
Yes.
I mean, do you think that there should actually be discussion between Carla and Mr. McGee before this happens? It seems like quite the surprise, all of a sudden, coming up to the.
I would think that that should be the way to business, before we would make a change.
That's assuming that she will, though.
We can.
We can.
The chairman will reach out and try to facilitate a meeting between Mr. McGee and her, prior to the meeting on the 9th, right?
Does it move to table?
I'll move to table.
Do you have a second for that motion?
Should I have to table it if it wasn't even on the agenda?
No, we got it to the agenda.
Did we?
Yeah.
Second, oh.
Before we vote on it, I just do want to say one thing, and I agree that we should wait, and, you know, there's no hurry on it, so, you know, so committee, we can send anybody if we really need to, or Scott can go, and.
Meeting's on the 9th, Mr. Santos.
Okay.
Of February.
What I will caution on is, you know, just please be careful when, you know, anybody's dealing with anywhere in the public, because even if we think it's not.
I have a freedom of speech, if I want to be sarcastic.
I understand that, but she's got.
I'm more sarcastic with all four of you guys.
Alright.
I understand, I just want to make it clear, and this is not directed just at you, this is everybody, I mean, if you, you gotta be cognizant of what people are gonna perceive of you, so just, you know, if somebody takes offense to something, then they have every right to take offense to it as well.
Well, I'm offended, you know.
I'm gonna call the vote.
24 hours a day, but I don't do anything about it.
I'm gonna call the vote, Scott, have you voted?
Aye.
To table?
Yes.
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 Yes. We'll table that and bring it up if necessary at the next meeting. Is there any other business to be brought forth to the school committee tonight? Oh, yes, we need to add one more item. So, received an email from the town clerk late this afternoon, like to add this to the agenda, it's in regard to a request surrounding closing the school on March 1st, 2016, which is the presidential primary date. So I make a motion to add that to the agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor to add this to the agenda?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, unanimous. Let me just read the correspondence that was received this afternoon. "Good afternoon, Chairman Myers, and speaking with George Brennan of the Cape Cod Times yesterday, he advised me of a letter that the town clerk from the town of Sandwich, Taylor White, had sent to the school committee requesting that the committee consider closing schools on March 1st for the presidential primary. However, when I spoke with Mr. White earlier today, he informed me that it was the school committee, based on a prior conversation with himself, that had decided to call a, quote unquote, 'snow day' on March 1st, 2016. At their meeting, Taylor informed the school committee members of the unusually high volume of voter registration that is currently taking place in Sandwich. This time, I'd like to advise you that this office has registered approximately 100 new voters in the last two weeks. Do you think that the school, the Mashpee School Committee, will consider voting to add this item to your agenda tonight, because it's something that needs to be addressed before our next meeting, and perhaps consider having a snow day on March 1st? Because we're electing a new president this year versus re-electing a currently seated president, turnout volumes are always higher than normal. In 2008, voter turnout for the presidential primary was 4,423, which is 41 percent of the voters in Mashpee, versus 1,784, or 18 percent in 2012. Appreciate the school committee's consideration in this matter. Signed, Debbie Dany, Mashpee Town Clerk."
Question, will you principal at that point in time get the question?
I have been principal during presidential election.
Was there any difficulty having a presidential primary election, whatever we're doing primaries?
Well, every election presents challenges when it is a school day.
There will be more people, I presume. I'm concerned, I believe, dates for voting are well-planned prior to, my problem is that a year ago, when we developed the calendar for 1516, or even further back than a year, this date would have been a known date, I believe, that the town could have communicated to the schools. I know, I personally am not in favor of a snow day on March 1st. I don't believe any of our principals are, we would not just close the Quasnet School, it would be the entire district. That could also put a burden on families who may not have planned for that. I hope that extra precautions would be put in place on March 1st, because of the expected heavy volume. I know that we are having school on the May Town Election Day, which got moved to a Tuesday?
17.
The 17th. Maybe won't be as widely attended, but for this March 1st date, I would prefer that schools remain open, and extra precautions would be put in place, and extra protocols to ensure student safety.
Thank you. I did try to reach out to the town clerk to ask her, you know, if we did go ahead and have school that day, whether her office or the town would be providing additional traffic mitigation support to help ensure that people are getting in and out efficiently, and not blocking entrances, etc. I did not hear back. This email that I received along with Acting Superintendent DeBoer was received at 4:04 this afternoon, so it was a little challenging for us to act on a timely basis back to it, and given, obviously, that this is our only meeting prior to that date, we wanted to bring it forth as expeditiously for the committee to consider. Personally, personally, I think we can make it work, and we go to starving school and carrying on an election. I think the town can help support that. I would hope that our selectmen liaison in the back of the room can help facilitate support from the town manager and DPWA police, whoever else is necessary, to help ensure that the election is carried out in an efficient and effective manner that's safe for both the voters and for our students. Other thoughts, George, Chris?
No, I agree, I mean, I think of the educators, and if the acting superintendent is fine with it, and the principals, it's remaining open, I'm fine with it.
I pretty much feel the same way, I mean, if we had a little more notice and could collect a little more data, then I'd feel a little more comfortable changing school rules and all that, but if you just don't have that information, it's kind of, yeah, give it to us an hour and a half or so before the meeting, I, you know, I'm not gonna go against the recommendation of the people that work in these buildings every day, so it's the right move to stay the same.
Patricia DeBoer will know that there's concerted effort to tape off that central, its main office corridor, and then the rear corridor, and then have some kind of security, whether it be uniformed or staff, that stands there and directs people away from the main corridors and towards the gymnasium. And then there's also a separate entrance into the gymnasium, and the only problem that I see that we've had before, is that we've had logistical problems with the amount of staff vehicles in the parking lot, and, you know, I don't know how maybe the town can help us, you know, maybe everyone can park at another building, and then be shuttled to their cars and back and forth, you know, I don't know how the, but that seems to be the biggest problem, you know, please.
Just observing the current parking lot at the Quasnet School, since it's been, since it has been redone, there are quite a few open spots. I do believe that some of the staff could probably park closer to this end, and still facilitate the quick in and out of that voting. I always was concerned, there are always campaigners that need to sort of be channeled into one area. We do have the buses that come to the back of the building, so that's better than it was in prior years or prior presidential elections. We still have parents who drop off in the front, so we could direct those students possibly to come in a different door. As long as there is an additional police officer who's posted at the front door of the Quasnet School, separate from the police officer, that ensures the integrity of the election, it works better. But we are used to having a very tight, secure building, so it does put everybody a little bit on edge that day.
Yeah, we were aware of this when we set the calendar back in January, you know, and the idea was that we previously had, you know, tightened up the security and made sure that, you know, good flow of people and traffic, and so I know it's gonna be a higher turnout, but I think we can do two things at once.
I mean, I think, one thing, since, you know, there is, since the Quasnet Gymnasium is the best place that we currently have available to hold the townwide elections, I think a concerted effort should be put forth, maybe jointly by the selectmen and the school committee, to really look at a potential redesign of the entranceway to the gymnasium, to facilitate, I believe the issue is that they need a double door into the gymnasium, so that if that existed, then people could go through that, and we would be able to secure the inside doors to rest of the school. And I believe there are restrooms available in the locker rooms, is that right? Or there are restroom facilities that are available in there? You're laughing, because you must not be right, but.
You need to take the field trip back there.
Yeah.
Yes, there are working bathrooms.
Okay, so there's working bathrooms. So, to me, given that this is not going to get resolved any times in the near future, that would make the most sense, so that we can facilitate being able to accommodate these, and be able to ensure the security of our student population, and, you know, if we have a separate interest that the voters can use, maybe we won't need to incur expense of having a separate detailed officer at the building door. But I would ask the selectmen to take a look at that as potentially something to do.
And just for the record, the November actual election is a professional day in the district, so the school will be closed in November.
Alright.
And the other, one more thing, we also have MCAS coming up later that month, I mean, we would lose a day, wouldn't we, of preparation?
Mrs. O'Brien, did you tell me that there was any testing in March?
We do have our testing in May.
Oh, it's in May.
Okay.
So I did have to adjust the testing for science MCAS. It was originally scheduled for May 17th and 18th, so I postponed that to the 18th and 19th, and that's for our 5th grade students only. I have, just one other piece, I have been in touch with Chief Carline of the Mashpee Police Department, and he has graciously said he will send a uniformed officer over for the school side on that election day, as well as an officer that's on the voting floor, so that day we will have two officers in the building.
Okay, alright. So do I have a motion to respond back to the town clerk, indicating that we appreciate her request, however, we feel that it best suits the needs of our students for them to be in class on March 1st.
Second.
Any more discussion in regard to that motion? Scott, have you voted?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, unanimous. I'm gonna respond back to that. Any other business that we need to bring forth to the committee for action tonight?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.